Can you do that?
Yeah, because it'll just be the-
Black screen?
Black screen.
That's fine. Can you play that now and then we can start live? That's what I'm asking.
No, that'll have to be when we post it.
They've got to edit it.
Okay. Okay. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the work session for the Newton County Board of Education. It's August 11th. We had a technical difficulty, so we actually started the meeting. So you guys are going to get the meeting twice if you go back and watch it again. So I do want to start. Are we up?
Yeah.
I just want to make sure we are up and rolling first.
We are.
Okay. So we do not have special recognition, so I do want to start the meeting off with the other matters of interest and the public participation. And I want to start the meeting off by saying something. Over the past two weeks, I have received some emails, some name-calling. I even had a DM message sent with a racial slur. And I wrote about all of these things on July 22nd, actually on a social media post. And since then, my headspace and my spirit and my energy has not been in a great place. And I want to say that I allowed those things to get to me and continue with my headspace not being in a good place. So I want to apologize for that spirit and energy with not having my headspace in the appropriate place. We had a very passionate board and discussion on Friday. The role of the chair is very tough. Being in the role of the chair, you have to remind people what is the guiding force that we use to make decisions. We also have to provide clarity on the items that we are discussing. I have spoken with my board members and apologized for myself for allowing my spirit and energy to be in a place that it didn't need to be on others' behalf. So I reached out to both of them and did that. So I want to say that I would not serve on this board with any other passionate people than we have before us. We all agree to disagree at times, but we all agree to do the right things for our community and the people that we serve. And it's a pleasure to serve with you guys. So I do apologize for allowing my energy to be in a spot that it didn't need to be. And actually, I had spoke with Mr. Bailey about it the Thursday before. You probably should have said a prayer for me then, but I'm back. I'm rejuvenated, and I've cleared the air with that. I also want to provide clarity on a policy, the policy AFC. So the AFC policy is not used to break a tie. And I probably should have added more wording in there. So what I said on Friday is that since it is a tie, Ms. Fury still has the opportunity to use the policy to go with the recommendation that she had made towards the board that did not pass. So the presentation was centered around the school system going virtual. So does closing for students to health and safety reason? Her speech was centered around the school system closing for the health and safety of students and going virtual. So since we had a tie, that means that it would stay the same with the options we had before us. But if she still wanted to recommend or if she still wanted, in fact, the school to close for the health and safety of the students, she could use policy AFC to do that. And so I'm going to state what that policy is, but I want to give you another example to help you understand. It's the same thing when we have inclement weather, so like when we have snow or ice. A lot of times, we see on Facebook as board members or you guys text us and say, "When is the school going to close? When are y'all going to make the announcement?" But it's actually not our role to close the school. That is the superintendent that has the power and authority to do that. And the policy AFC says the superintendent or designated is authorized to take action to close one or more of the system's schools if conditions exist that may threaten the health and safety of students and personnel. Okay? And just to let you guys know, we actually had started the meeting, and we had public participation as well, but the cameras were not rolling. So just in case those participants had a group that they were speaking up for, and you all already know I document everything, I take notes. So we had a Mr. Kevin Wade who wanted clarity on the word "close" in the policy. He also had a question about the mileage rate and the mileage rate being reduced since we weren't using the school buildings. And how we do when we get public participat- excuse me, public participation is, we email those responses back to the people who are asking them. Then we had Mr. Crayon, and he brought a concern about pushing the instruction back to September 8th and how we had a reopening plan in place. And we know, we knew ahead of time we were in a pandemic. So his question centered around, why wasn't the school system prepared to open on its regular date and had to push the date back to September 8th? And then we had one more person, but she ended up not having a question.
Right.
Okay, I can't remember the name.
Yeah.
Okay. And that's it for public participation. So we will carry on where we left off, which is I'll go back to have a motion to approve the agenda.
All right. So, Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to amend the agenda. And if you look at items F, G, and H, I would like us to have board action taken on those tonight.
Okay. Ms. Coggan is making a motion to amend agenda where items F, G, and H under new business now become action items for tonight. Is there a second? Okay, we have a second from Mr. Johnson. Any discussion? Having none, I'll call for the question. All in favor?
Aye.
No opposed. Four, zero, K, F, G, H will be action items. Okay, we'll go ahead and proceed forward. May I have a motion to approve the minutes, please? Okay, it's been moved by Mr. Johnson.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Coggan. Any discussion? All in favor? Okay, four, zero, thank you. Superintendent's reports.
Yes, ma'am. Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, Madam Superintendent.
Good evening.
Financial summary, the special purpose local option for education sales tax, ESPLUS V. Distribution for June was $1,293,328, which is a decrease of $14,825 from the previous month. The average for the first six months of ESPLUS V was $1,230,389. The Title Ad Valorem collection for June was $574,714. Salaries and benefits for July for 10- and 11-month employees have been accrued into fiscal year 2020, as have the appropriate revenues. Expenditures which relate to fiscal year 2020 continue to be processed. The next bullet point, the school system is anticipating final collections for 2020 from the Tax Commissioner. And the final ending fund balance will be available at the October board meeting. And that concludes the financial report, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Barr. Do we have any questions on the financial report? Okay, having none, you can proceed.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Roundtree.
I have the superintendent's report as relates to the strategic plan. Beginning with student achievement and success, the elementary curriculum and instruction team continues to work on curriculum maps for the 2020-2021 school year. Maps have been made available to administrators and teachers on canvas to ensure high-quality instruction for all students. High-quality workforce, teachers joining NCSS for the 2020-2021 school year are being highlighted on social media each day. A brief introduction is given for each teacher, along with the location at which the teacher will work. New teachers report feeling very honored to be introduced to the system through these platforms. Culture, climate, and communication. The Newton County School System Public Relations Department was recognized by the National School Public Relations Association with an award of honorable mention for the district's 2017-18 annual report. As a result, the district's annual report is now showcased on the National School Public Relations Association's national website at www.nspra.org. And finally, under organizational and operational effectiveness, the school nutrition department continues to expand the feeding program by supporting additional sites at Riverwalk Farms, Wellington Ride, and Alkobe Terrace Apartments. The school system is now providing food at 38 locations throughout the county. And that is the superintendent's report.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Roundtree. Are there any questions about the strategic plan upon the superintendent's report? Okay, having none. Old Business. Old Business, we do have, still have requested board action relative to professional learning services. Are you guys ready to remove this one, or do you want to keep this on here? Do we want to?
We would like to remove it.
Okay. All right, so that will be removed. Thank you. So the team itself that requested this is asking to remove it from the agenda, so we'll no longer have that on their old business. The board won't have to vote for it since the original team that requested it is asking to remove it. Thank you. New Business. Item A.
Yes, ma'am. In item A, the superintendent recommends the approval of the FY 2021 budget for all governmental funds. The tentative budget approved by the board on July 21, 2020 was advertised as required, and the tentative budget was approved using a mileage rate of 19.788 mils. And as you know, Madam Chair, there's been a comprehensive budget review process where you all have met and reviewed it, and you have also adopted the tentative budget. And so that is item A.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Barr. Item A, are there any questions for item A during the work session? Okay, having none, we'll proceed to item B.
In item B, the superintendent recommends the purchase of 5.818 acres of property as described in Exhibit A there for your review. The purchase price for the property is $12,062 per survey acre, and the total cost is $70,177. And this property is required for the replacement high school facility. And the funding source is outlined there for you, and that is item B.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Barr. Item B is relative to the purchase of property. This is an action item for tonight, so I'll need a motion to move it forward, please. Okay, it's been moved by Mr. Bailey. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Coggan. The floor is now open for discussion. Anybody need a floor? Okay, having none, I'll call for the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed?
Aye.
Okay, three, one. Item C.
In item C, the superintendent recommends the acceptance and use of the 21st Century Learning Center grant funds as outlined. The total value of the grant is $1,400,000. The school system will utilize four grants with those funds to fund after-school programs for 600 students at 11 schools and the Washington Street Community Center. This deals with strategic goal area one, student achievement and success. The award notices are there for your review, and that concludes item C, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Barr. Item C. Does the board have any questions for C? Okay.
This, I'm sorry, this is for the after-school program.
Yes, and we have Ms. Sams here if you want to-
So if we, if we don't utilize the after-school program, where will these funds go?
So we will utilize the funding. We will have a virtual program.
A virtual after-school program?
Mm-hmm, yes. We had, we actually ran virtual programs in the spring when we closed in March.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, thank you, Ms. Sams. Thank you, Dr. Barr. You can proceed with the next item.
Yes, ma'am. In item D, the superintendent recommends the approval of a continued partnership program and contract with the Washington Street Community Center. The total contract value is $60,000. The 21st Century Community Learning Center's program is a federally funded grant that you just approved. Community-based organizations may be utilized to support these programs. The Washington Street Community Center was included in the school system's grant proposal and approved by state administrators as one of the program sites. And again, this deals with strategic area, goal area one, student achievement and success, and the funding source is outlined for your review. And that is item D, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for item D? Okay, having none. Item E.
In item E, the superintendent recommends the approval of the purchase of FastBridge software, a component of the comprehensive assessment solution from Illuminate Education. The purchase amount is $98,350. FastBridge provides the information needed to implement an effective response to intervention framework with evidence-based reading, math, and behavioral screening and progress monitoring assessments. This deals with strategic goal area one, student achievement and success, and the funding source and purchasing documentation are there for your review. That is item E.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Barr. Item E, any questions?
My questions will be the same probably for any of these approvals. It's just, are they all available virtually? If we purchased these items, are they going to be used virtually? If they're not used virtually, what, do we get a refund?
Yes, FastBridge will be available virtually.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Jordan. Any other questions? Okay, thank you. Okay, we'll proceed to item F, which is an action item. And before we proceed actually to Mr. Bailey, on some of these, like the 21st Century Grant, like I think it's specifically tied to how we have to use that. Am I correct on that, Dr. Thomas? Okay, because it's a grant, so that's the after-school one. So we couldn't utilize that fund any other way.
Mm-hmm.
That is correct.
Okay. Okay, item F is an action item?
In item F, the superintendent recommends the video web conferencing software needed for the school system be purchased from CDWG of Vernon Hills, Illinois. The contract value is $35,572. The software will be procured through its reseller, CDWG, utilizing a contract managed by the E&amp;I Cooperative Services and National Purchasing Cooperative. This deals with strategic goal area one, student achievement and success. Purchase documentation and the funding source are outlined there for your review. That is item F.
Okay, item F is an action item, so I need a motion to move it forward, please. Okay, it's been moved by Mr. Johnson. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Coggan. The floor is now open for discussion.
I've got a question.
Okay.
So this will be used in order to support the virtual services or virtual education? Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am. I believe that's Dr. Phile's there, but that's the primary, primary video conferencing tool.
Okay. That's all I have.
Okay, any other questions? Having none, I'll call for the question of the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Four, zero, thank you. Item G.
In item G, the superintendent recommends the Chromebooks needed for select schools be purchased from Dale Marketing LP of Round Rock, Texas. The total cost will be $360,525. The school system will utilize a State of Georgia contract to procure the equipment. The schools and their associated costs are there for your review. This deals with strategic goal area one, student achievement and success, and strategic goal area four, organizational operational effectiveness. And the funding source is FY 2021 Title I Part A, school allocations. And so they're using their Title I funds to purchase those computers. And that concludes item G.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Barr. Item G is an action item. I need a motion to move forward, please. Been moved by Mr. Johnson. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Bailey. The floor is open for discussion. Okay, go ahead, Mr. Johnson.
What will this determine? Ultimate going to 101 percentages from the school system standpoint? For devices?
With this order and the order that we placed previously, it'll give us the numbers to have us close to one-to-one at our high schools and give us a percentage where we can get close to one-to-one at our middle. And we will have select elementary that'll be closer based on the grant that they received earlier this year.
Thank you. I have another comment. What do we need? An idea of what we need in terms of cost to lead for us to 101 devices for our students and system?
To get us to one-to-one, there's a number for that, but one thing to keep in mind, it's one thing to get us there, it's another thing to be able to keep us at that level. So to get us to have enough devices for each student and to have us with an overage of about 5% to allow for breakage and hot swaps throughout the district, we'd be looking at a number, I believe, close to, let me get that in. It's going to have us around 7,000, I mean, excuse me, 7, excuse me.
Why don't we just hold off and give you that information so it's accurate? So we'll tell you, we'll send you some information. Because I've sent the report already with all the numbers, so you have that. So I don't think that that report includes this information. So let me update it and send it to you.
Is it possible we can have it in a presentation? Like, I know we have a lot going on right now, but at a later time, a later date, when everything clears up, so we all can know where, because I think that's something we all would like to know.
That you all have the document.
Yeah, I know we have the document, but like when, when Dr. Phile is saying, like, the upkeep is the problem. Like, is there a plan in place or some things that you have thought about that you have? So I would be interested in knowing, like, what those things, what kind of numbers we're looking for when we talk about the upkeep. So if it's possible, like, at some time, we're not saying plan that now with everything going on, but at some time when we do have time this year, we can hear that presentation. Would you guys like to hear that?
That's fine.
Yeah, I think we all be interested in that, if we can have it.
Madam Chair, I'm sorry.
My question is in putting some kind of urgency on it. We're in a bridge now, we don't know when it will come out of that status. But we need to get some notion of what we got remaining, what is going to do for us, what we have to come up financially.
You can send that now and then do the presentation later.
I think we'll be avoiding the issue. I recognize, and what we all against financially, that's what I'm looking for, because we don't know what's going to happen downstream. I hope we come up with a solution quickly, but what if we don't? We've got to come up with a solution for how to approach the problem and leave you know what impact it's going to put on the system and how can we deal with it.
Okay, Ms. Coggan. Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Ms. Coggan?
Thank you. This kind of has to do with this, but since you're here, I know Chromebooks are basically, I think, just closed out the document, but $345 approximately a piece. In order to complete the virtual education, and I know like at the Career Academy, we have animation and graphic design, and they use Mac computers for their programs. And last spring, that sort of, once we shut down, not everybody had a Mac, so they were not capable of doing all that, except unless they used their phones if they had an Apple product. So in saying that, are we going to have to purchase any additional Mac computers so that they can complete their course? And if so, is that on our horizon, or will we have those in place before the start of the school year?
Going in that direction, that would be one of those things that we'd work in conjunction with. I know Dr. Schmidt and his, his students, for example, the STEM students, those students don't receive Chromebooks, they get full PC. And so in a true one-to-one program, the students, based on their career pathway, would get the most adequate device for their career pathway.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Any other questions? And the number presented before, before us is the number that the schools were requesting based on how much they had in funding for Title I funding, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you, Dr. Phile. This is an action item as well. So now I'll call for the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Four, zero, thank you. Item H.
Yes, ma'am. In item H, the superintendent recommends a hand sanitizer and dispensers needed for the school system be purchased from Buckeye Cleaning Centers of Norcross, Georgia. The estimated contract value is $70,000, and the sanitizer and equipment will be purchased utilizing a contract managed by National Buy Board, a national purchasing cooperative established in part by the National School Boards Association. This deals with strategic goal area four, organizational and operational effectiveness, and the funding source is outlined there for your review. And that is item H.
Okay. Item H is an action item. I need a motion to move it forward, please.
So moved. Second.
Okay, moved by Mr. Johnson, second by Ms. Coggan. Floor is open for discussion.
So a question?
Okay, go ahead, Mr. Johnson.
Is this the first purchase of sanitized material and sanitizer that we have for a virtual school? Is this the first purchase?
No, sir, it's not. We've got approximately 2,200 gallons of hand sanitizer ready to go and the dispensers for that. And so this would just be what is needed in addition when children return to school. We just don't want there to be any lapse in the supply of hand sanitizer.
That's helping with my memory. That request didn't come, did it come to the board with your purchase?
Some, much of it, so a great percentage of it came through GMA, through their distribution, and some of it came from a purchase from us, but a much smaller amount. So some was provided at no cost. And so before we go over the threshold that needs board approval, we're asking for board approval because we assume that we're going to need more hand sanitizer for the year.
That's not what I'm trying to find out. How did you pay for it additionally? That's ultimately my question.
So-
How did you pay for the sanitizer prior to ordering this?
With M&amp;O funds.
I don't understand. M and what?
M&amp;O funds, which would be from our general fund.
And that request is already good process?
That's correct, yes, for some of it. But the vast majority of it was at no charge to the school district through the Georgia Emergency Management Agency.
So it didn't meet the threshold to bring it for board approval? But it will, so that's why we're bringing it now.
I just know that if you get their pressure, then they just generally come late and start ordering and stuff now. That's what my initial reaction when I saw this.
Yeah.
That what have we been up until this point on this issue?
Right, we have, we have plenty of hand sanitizer to open school when we open school, but we will need more.
Well, this is one of those issues that we probably should have been informed on what you were doing. I should not be excited about this petition from my viewpoint being the first order.
Yeah, it is, it is not the first order. And so I sat over in that chair for about three hours one day going over our plan, and hand sanitizer was an important part of that plan. So we've been in the process of purchasing enough for school to open, and secondly, receiving supplies from GMA.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions? I do have one. My only one is about, because a lot of these supplies, multiple districts and schools and organizations and businesses are needing these items, I just want to make sure there's no back order on any of these items.
No, ma'am, not at this time.
Okay.
And we have some stocked in the warehouse ready to-
Just in case, okay.
And this, and this is insurance so that we don't have a disruption in the supply chain.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, any other questions?
Yes, I have a question. What provisions have been made to your thought process in getting maintenance folks to install and maintain, change this equipment as a unit? I don't see a existing force managing this additionally. So what do you see downstream that we need to manage our handling, sanitation of this?
So, so as you may recall, we have approximately $250,000 in CARES fund to supplement the work of our custodians for professional services outside our own staff, if it's needed. Is that the question, labor?
Yes, it is. You all set with that in terms of what we need in terms of the contracting?
Yes, sir. We have companies identified, and we have, our process, internal process is ready to go, so, yes, sir.
Well, I don't know whether to get upset or what, I don't know if it makes a difference or not. But I just think that type of information should be shared with us more in detail as to what you're doing and what you've got on board. Because I sit here and don't know what I'm concerned with.
Okay. I can, I can provide a list to the board. I've got how many masks we have, how many sanitizing stations we have, how many gallons of hand sanitizer we have, how many gloves we have, how many face shields we have. I've got all of that information that can be provided.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion, questions? Concerns? Okay, I'll call for the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Four, zero, thank you. Item I.
All right. In item I, the superintendent recommends the sports lighting needed for the replacement Eastside High School be purchased from Musco Sports Lighting- be purchased from Musco Sports Lighting LLC of Uscaloosa, Iowa. The total cost is nine hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars. Two vendors provided pricing based on their previously awarded contracts through Sourcewell and National Purchasing Cooperative. The table below shows the vendors and their pricing. This deals with strategic goal area four, organizational and operational effectiveness. Funding sources outlined there for you is from general obligation bonds, and the purchasing documentation is also provided for your review. And that is item I, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Barr. Item I does not, is not an action item. Is there any discussion?
Yes, I'm coming.
Okay.
Why are we being asked to approve this like a fee?
Okay, so the, the, two reasons. One, it's above the, the purchasing threshold. And then, of course, the second one is, it was an item that was submitted in the bid by the contractor. We reviewed that.
I'm supportive, submit, when?
It was submitted in the bid by the contractor, the general contractor, and through, through our review process of the items contained in that bid, we thought that we could do better if we pull the item out of the contract and, and used a purchasing cooperative. So the amount that the contractor submitted in the bid was one point three million dollars. One million, three hundred seventeen thousand, six hundred fifty-six dollars. And so by utilizing, by purchasing it in this way, we were able to save three hundred eighty-two thousand, six hundred fifty-six dollars.
I, 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 I'm just, today is just not my day. Shouldn't this be something that we should be told about? That you, you're going through this process?
So I, I feel like we are charged to save dollars in every way we can, and that's what we've done in this process. We've saved approximately four hundred thousand dollars. So we're continuously reviewing the expenditures for the project and seeing where we can save money.
So this is a change order?
No, sir, it is not a change order. We removed it from the contract because we, we believe we could get better pricing, and we had.
Dr. Barr, are there other items to do with the replacement of Eastside?
I think one of them, the only other one I can remember right off has to do with kitchen equipment.
Because we can get it through a buy, what do you call it?
Right, uh, purchasing cooperative, possibly through a bid process.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions or discussion? And normally, when you bring those things back to us, you do put all of the bids or all of the vendors that do have their prices on there, and then you show us which one you selected, to show that it's more cost-effective. Okay, alright, item J?
In item J, the superintendent recommends the attached items be declared surplus and disposed of per board policy. This deals with strategic goal area four, organizational and operational effectiveness, and the items that we would like to surplus are there for your review. And that is item J, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you. Any questions on item J? Item K?
In item K, the superintendent recommends the Newton County Board of Education support the work embedded in the Georgia Vision Project for Public Education. The strategic goals and the Newton County School System's recently adopted five-year strategic plan mirror the recommendations of the Vision Project, all of which will support our, our work to ensure all students are well-rounded and prepared for the future. And there are more details provided there for your review, and a copy of the resolution is included. And that is my, uh, item K, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you. Any questions? Okay, item L?
In item L, following a review and discussion of the upcoming training sessions provided by the Griffin RISA for local board training for 2020, 2021, the superintendent recommends the approval of the completed proposal, Local Board Training Plan. And the training plan is there for review, Madam Chair, and that is item L.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Um, just a reminder to look at the Griffin RISA documents, so you can make a decision next week.
Thank you. Item M?
In item M, the superintendent requests authorization to employ and transfer staff during the first month of school as enrollment and class size equity within this district, within the district demands. Daily review of the numbers occurs in order to add or collapse classes early in the school year. Based on those reviews, the superintendent has historically been granted the authority to employ or transfer staff as needed in order to effect the change prior to board approval. These additions or transfers will, of course, be included in subsequent personnel recommendations for ratification. And that is item M, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Barr. Any questions for item M?
It's related to item M? I know these are for in-person classroom numbers, correct?
And it could also be, well, we probably wouldn't move someone from one building to another, but it could also apply to a class where we need a teacher at a different building to support virtual as well.
Right, so I think my, my question was, would we still keep these thresholds for virtual classes? So let's say grades nine through twelve is thirty-two is the, the, the number?
Yeah.
We would not have thirty-five or forty kids in a virtual class, is that?
Probably not, Mr. Bailey.
Okay.
That would probably, probably not be a good, a good plan.
Right, okay.
Okay, any other questions for item M?
Can I comment, please?
Yes.
The two hundred thousand, seven thousand five hundred thousand, to me, seems to be rather small.
Mr. Johnson, we painstakingly go through our, our allocations based on our enrollment numbers. And so we've been pretty good, pretty close to hiring the exact number of teachers that we need. I don't recall, I don't think we even had to hire anybody in the past. It's just in case we need to. So Mr. Roundtree can speak to how, how much effort goes into really studying the numbers, looking at the trends to try to ensure that we hire the, the right number of teachers. So hopefully, we'll continue that trend. We haven't had to, to use those funds.
If, if, if we're under now normal circumstances, I, I would be honored. But we're charting depth and water that have never been before.
Right.
So we, we really don't know. So I'd rather be, I don't know if it's too late. Be told that we have a, a surplus that we didn't use, and we come back and not playing, playing properly, that we need more. Any conditions that we're in now?
So, so are you asking me to add money to that, to the two hundred thousand?
Yes, I am. I think it would be, should have us a number, it doesn't, I, I, that's my vision. No, we're, we're good to go. I would rather see that they have it and not leave it, and then they need it and not have it. Thank you.
Okay, any other discussion on item M? Okay, having none, item N?
In item N, the superintendent recommends approval of personnel recommendations discussed in executive session. And that is item 10.
Okay, item N is an action item. May I have a motion?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Mr. Johnson, seconded by Mr. Bailey. All in favor? Let me hear you say aye.
Aye.
Okay, four zero, thank you. Other matters of interest?
I, I have a few. Maybe I'll toss this one up for the superintendent. I know that a lot of, I've been getting a lot of comments and, and questions, actually, about students with IEPs, 504, special needs. If we were to go all virtual, just making sure that that demographic doesn't get left, those students don't get left out, not that they would be left out. I just want to hear more about the plan. I know we've asked a couple of times at the last two meetings. Just, so just if you have any more update on, on what that looks like and maybe set some of these parents at ease?
Sure, so Mr. Roundtree really has been working closely with Ms. Ramsey, so I'll, I'll ask him to, to speak to that.
Okay, well, first and foremost, students' IEP doesn't necessarily change because of the physical environment. So, you know, what's in there, they, if the IEP team has deemed what's in the IEP as, as necessary, them, now, there may have to be some tweaks. For example, if, if, if it's in there that a 504 may say that a child needs, you know, a cane, you know, to, you know, to get, the use of a cane to get, you know, from one building to a next. Well, obviously, that's something that would not be, you know, needed in that time. But, but as it relates to their instruction, everything that drives what we do with a special needs student is in the IEP. That's what drives what happens with them. And so in my previous two responses to the question, I've noted that if the IEP team deems that there is a need for a change in a type of service, then, you know, it will be. I spoke with Ms. Ramsey, you know, again today. They have been working feverishly, trying to make sure that all of the students' needs, you know, are, are being met. And at this juncture, they've not found any instances where they feel as though there needed to be a change in services. However, if, if, if a parent feels that there should be a change in service, well, then obviously, the IEP team, as I said before, would convene and then make a determination. I want to encourage the community, though, to, if they have any questions or any kind of anxiety, Ms. Ramsey's team has been great about answering, you know, the questions. So they can shoot her an email, they can shoot an email to the instructional options, um, 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 email address, and either she or Mr. Tremaglia or, or Mr. Lewis, you know, will get them a response, you know, right away. But I, I want to assure parents, again, that, as I said before, we are duly bound to follow whatever is in that IEP. And if it's in there, and it does not need to be, then they, you know, they will address that. It's kind of difficult to give a, kind of a general statement, because the IEP is specific to the child.
Sure.
They are working on a set of frequently asked questions. I, they sent me some samples today where they are addressing, you know, the general curriculum, the adapted curriculum, speech and occupational therapy and those, those special services, as well as the vision impaired deaf-hearted hearing kids, as well as behavioral support. Um, in, and in Zoom, and we are encouraging the general education teachers to do this, too. But they can, they can always do breakout sessions. So if a parent, if a child is receiving paraprofessional support, and, and say, for example, he's mainstream to a regular classroom, and he's supposed to receive paraprofessional support based on what's in the IEP, well, we have a mechanism in, in Zoom where if that child needs that additional one-on-one support from that parent, they can go into a breakout room and still continue to receive the service as though the parapro was actually in the classroom, you know, with the child. As you know, if they're in, if they are mainstream, a, the, the general ed teacher and the special education teacher are working in tandem anyway. So again, they can, you know, break off into a small group or, or still provide one-on-one instruction, you know, based on the technological capabilities that we have. But I, I, this is the third time we've, we've had this question. And again, I want to ensure families, again, that we are not going to sidestep what's in the IEP. We get into a whole bunch of trouble, as Ms. Ramsey can tell you, if we do not provide the services, you know, that are in there. Now, will we need to be creative if, if we run into an issue? We may have to, but we can't really pinpoint, you know, what the challenges may be, because, as I said earlier, the IEPs are specific, you know, to each individual child.
So, so first of all, thank you for saying it the third time. Uh, but that is more information, certainly, than we've gotten before, so thank you for that. A lot of clarity from that. I think it'll be helpful to our parents. So just for clarity, though, the communication flow right now is not from, is not from central office to the parents, right? Like, no one's contacting parents with IEP, with, have kids with IEPs right now?
Not specifically right now, because there is not, after reviewing the IEPs, her team felt that there was not a need for a change in services, because the only thing that has changed is where we are delivering the instruction.
Okay, alright, so that, I think, needs to be heard. So if, you know, if parents are listening who have kids with IEPs, no one's reaching out to you, and that's okay. However, if you have questions about it, could you maybe read off the email addresses they can contact? So that they'll know quickly, even tonight, who to contact and get a...
Well, they can email Ms. Ramsey directly, and she's ramsey.brooke, that's B-R-O-O-K-E, at newton.k12.g a.us. And from there, she cascades it out to the, either the secondary coordinator or the elementary coordinator. But she basically has really been doing a lot of it on her, on her own. And I know Mr. Tremaglia, because I sent Mr. Tremaglia and Mr. Lewis, I've sent them questions directly, and they've actually gotten on the phone and just called the parents. There is a document, however, that is called Guidance for Parents of Students with Disabilities. And they have, I asked her today, had that been posted? I know they have been working on it. And it should, the Special Education Department has a, they have a canvas page. So they should be, you know, able to access it there. The only barrier that we're facing right now, the students have case managers, where a lot of parents deal directly with the case managers before they, they come, you know, down here to us. And of course, the case managers are not back on contract yet because they're teachers. So once teachers return on Friday, then a lot of that, of course, information, you know, can be disseminated, you know, from them. But all they have to do is send an email directly to Ms. Ramsey or the, it's instructional, where's Mr. Dr. Fial? Instructionaloptions@newton.k12.g a.us. And we man that, you know, around the clock, and they can all, I've, I heard, I don't want to say her name, but I got one last Friday after the board meeting from a parent. So they even emailed me directly. And so from there, if I can't answer the question, I will send it to one of the special ed experts.
Got you, thank you, that's, that's helpful.
Okay, any other matters of interest?
I, I do have a couple more, I don't, I don't want to...
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Bailey, go ahead.
No, I'm, I'm, if, if we want to go back and forth...
It was a long pause, I thought you were finished.
Well, I didn't know if anybody else wanted to jump in there. I have, and certainly from Friday's announcement, there's been some, some, just some, some tension surrounding that, and rightfully so, we understand that. Speaking to our strategic plan, you know, we've, we're, we're continuing to talk about that we endeavor to ensure a systemic culture of safety, and I certainly wholeheartedly agree with that. Also, in our strategic plan, we endeavor to provide equitable and inclusive learning environments. So that's goal area three. And I, I know with the, the announcement last week to move to all virtual, I'll still continue to advocate for my district that we will not have equitable and inclusive learning environments at this point. And I know we're working on some solutions to that, so kudos to the team, working hard to try to get us some high-speed internet in our areas. And I know Stan Edwards, District One Commissioner, Newton County Commissioner, he's also working hard to get us some, some infrastructure built out there. So I didn't want people to think we haven't been working on that. I know this team's working on it, also hotspots and computers. Also, goal area four, to provide high-quality operational and instructional supports. I know we're going to be missing some of that in District One and District Five, in that strategic goal area, when we go all virtual. And so I know we all have our work cut out for us, but I just want you guys to know that, you know, we'll continue to advocate for in-person. At the same time, and I know we've had, and I just want to repeat again, for those, particularly in, in my district, I'll just speak, who, who are, who are worried about their kids falling behind, that, again, it is this board's wish, and the superintendent's wish, and this executive team's wish, that our kids will be in-person. That's our, that's our number, safety, and we want our kids in-person, to, to learn in-person. And so I, I do want our, our people and our parents to hear that, that that is our, our goal. We want to get our kids back in the classroom and as safely as possible. So going to support the superintendent and her decisions, and we're going to continue to move forward in an, in an effort to, to do what we can in unity. I do want to just have one more thing, and then I'll be finished.
Can I chime in on after that one, though? Because I want to commend you on something on that.
Yeah, go ahead.
So I, I want to just chime in after that one on Mr. Bailey with coming back with strategic goals. Mr. Bailey, actually, you know, at the meeting Friday, I kept saying our driving force is that strategic plan. This is what we make decisions off of, out of the strategic plan. What the strategic plan does, I mean, it's community-based, it's school system-based, so the stakeholders had a part in it. But what it does, it keeps things from being politicized, it keeps things from being, you know, a, a one-directional or divide. And so it's always important that our decisions are centered around that strategic plan. And I want to commend Mr. Bailey, because I kept saying that Friday, like, this is the strategic plan. This is what we make our decisions off of. And knowing Mr. Bailey, how long he's been on this board, what he always does is does his homework and his research. And he will go back and take what was said and then find a way to make things happen. So I'm commending him on that, because he sent an email, and he said, "Madam Chair, this is what you said with the strategic plan. I want to point out these two goal areas to use my argument." And I immediately emailed him and said, "I don't have a problem with that, because it says that plain as day, and, and, and that's, we have to do so both that's safe and we have to be equitable." So I want to commend you with doing that, for going back and doing that research and coming back, not on an argument of, "This is what needs to happen," but this is the dividing thing, this is the thing that we make decisions off of, and I want to use these two bullet points, so.
Yeah, well, thank you for the thank you. And then just lastly, I'm already getting calls from churches and other organizations who are already working to kind of make a way to facilitate groups of our students, you know, pretty... you know, particularly, particularly in our area where internet is, is bad. Uh, we have some churches and some larger churches that have, uh, h- high-speed internet and so they're working to, to, to come up with some solutions to get our kids, uh, in some of those, um, environments, uh, that will be safe and we'll have some volunteers to, to help, uh, facilitate those students. And of course, I believe that we have better resources at the, at, uh, Newton County School System, uh, better, um, space, better facilitators and teachers and, um, uh, so I commend, uh, the community for trying to, to make a solution, uh, for where there's a very difficult problem. Uh, and so, uh, I just wanted to say that tonight and, and just really glad to see, even with all the division, to actually see, uh, some people coming up with some solutions that are helpful, uh, and it's actually helping us, helping, helping the board out right now and helping the, the school system out, um, when we are unable to, to help fully like we want to. So thank you to those organizations. Thank you.
Okay, any other matters of interest?
Madam Chairman.
Yes.
Um, just to follow up with what Mr. Bailey has, has so eloquently articulated with respect to in-person instruction, I mean, that, that is the goal. It's never not been the goal. It's the best way to educate children. And so, um, that's, that's what I'm doing, lifting rocks, moving mountains, talking to folks, waiting for teachers to get back, our veteran teachers to return to the buildings. I've heard from some of our teachers who are, you know, interested in working directly with students and I want to try to help them make that happen, but I always have to put the health and safety first. And so I'm, I'm looking at the numbers as recent as today and I, I cannot, um, implore our community enough. Everybody has to do their part in helping us get our kids back to school by doing the three W's, watching your distance, washing your hands and wearing your mask. And I mean, we go out and in the, driving in the community and we see people just not doing it. Um, I, we, as we are sitting here, we're being notified of people within our school system who are now COVID-positive. And so it makes it challenging for the school system to operate and you can witness it happening in the school systems that are opening, the intermittent closure of classrooms and schools. Um, we're going to get there, we're going to open our schools, I don't have any doubt in my mind about that. But in, if, if our community, and, and I believe this, I'm a member of the community, if, if we want for in-person instruction, instruction to take place and our children and faculty and staff to be in our buildings, working directly with the kids, we must bring the case numbers and the positivity rates and the ER visits and the, all of those pieces down. And, and the numbers are, are getting there. The positivity one, Mr. Bailey, which you're so concerned about, is the one that actually is moving downward. It's still high, but it's moving downward. Unfortunately, we've had two, two weeks, we had decreasing 14-day case rates, we had a stationary, there wasn't any movement, negative or positive. And then this week, Monday, the results come out and, and it's back on the trend up. Now, it's not hugely up, but it's up and still high. And the only way that that's going to change is if we're really in our community, very focused on those things, and I think we'll do it. Um, I think people are highly motivated to, to help us get there. And as I said, when we had the options, that if the conditions, um, warrant a pivot to another action, then I would take that action. Same thing in this situation. If the conditions warrant a pivot, we will pivot and do what we need to do. And I just want to assure people in the community that this is, for me, temporary as we work to drive down the numbers of positive cases in our community. So thank you.
Commissioner Schultz has, uh, started a somewhat of a campaign, um, locally and I think, I don't know if she coined the term or not, but it's do your part so schools can start.
Yes, yes.
I liked that. I think that's something we can all get behind and, and work towards.
Yeah, we can do it.
I have one, or, I'm sorry, are you finished?
I'm finished.
Okay. Um, I just, this is completely a different topic, but I just wanted to thank all of the team, um, both here, central office, as well as in the schools for the graduation that we had for our students back in the 31st and First. I know a lot of people went over and beyond and it was a great event, I thought, a little warm for ALCOVs that morning, but, uh, uh, we survived and, uh, I think it was great that we could make that event come off the way it did and it was a success. So thank you all to anybody who had anything to do with that.
Thank you.
Any other matters of interest? I actually have one. I need to make a motion, actually, to go back into executive session for legal matters.
Second?
Okay, it's been seconded by Mr. Bailey, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, four zero. Okay, if you will pardon us, we need to go back into executive session for a legal matter.
We need to
Napoleon?
Yes.
You'll need to stop the video for executive session.